Welcome and thank you for joining us. I'm Kristi Gornson. KSPS is pleased to bring you this debate featuring the candidates running for Spokane City Council from District 1. District 1 represents the citizens living in northeast Spokane. The district is located east of Division and north of the Spokane River and includes Hilliard and extends to Felt's Field. The candidates in this race are Tim Benn and Michael Cathcart. Welcome to you both. Tim Benn is the co-owner of a childcare business and is currently serving as Chair of the Mini-Haha Neighborhood Council. Michael Cathcart is Executive Director of Better Spokane, an organization that supports business-friendly policies and candidates. He's also the sponsor of both City Propositions 1 and 2 on the November ballot. For this debate, the candidates will answer questions from a panel of Spokane journalists. Please welcome Adam Schenks, reporter for the City Desk at the Spokesman Review, and Samantha Woffle, reporter for the Illander. So here are the debate rules as agreed to by the candidates. The candidates will have one minute for answers. Each candidate will be allowed two rebuttals for the entire debate. Rebuttal length will be limited to 30 seconds. All right, so let's begin. A coin flip earlier determined that, Mr. Benn, you will have the opportunity to answer the first question first, and that first question is going to come from Adam.
All right, so we're going to start with public safety. The voter-approved levy has funded the addition of about 20 more police officers to our police department. Do you believe that the city needs more officers than that? And specifically, how do you believe that should be funded? Through additional taxes or cuts to the budget? And specifically, if they are cuts to the budget, where would you make those cuts?
Well, I think we have to dig deep into the budget to look for those kinds of cuts, but we do need to add more officers. According to studies, we are short upwards of 50 officers for the size population we have. So I think we've got to really go to the budget and look at every penny. Where is it going? What are we spending? When we look at all the programs that are out there that our law enforcement is engaged in, which ones are effective? Where are our resources? I think we can save money on equipment. Currently, our officers are hot seating, so they're sharing vehicles. It's harder on the vehicles. They're not lasting as long. So I think we can look for long-term savings in some of those areas and end up with the money we need for those officers.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think public safety's been kind of a centerpiece of what I've been talking about in this campaign. Yeah, we do. We need about 50 new officers total to be kind of comparable to cities that are our size, and so that's going to be really important. I think it's really critical that we go through that budget with a scalpel. We find every bit of waste. We find every piece of low-priority issues that we can, eliminate those, put those resources to law enforcement. We can put those back on the ballot for the voters to consider later on if they are things that they want to keep. But public safety is our first and foremost, most paramount duty of the city, and so we have to focus on that. As far as specifics go, I mean, it's so hard when you're an outsider to be able to say specifically without being able to sit and interview staff and departments and really get a good sense of where that waste is and be able to make those adjustments in the budget. So that's going to be something I'm looking forward to working with the new mayor on, and I think we can actually do some good things and hire more officers.
All right, moving on to the next question. Samantha and Michael, you'll take this one first.
So Black and Native American residents are three to four times more likely than their white counterparts to be booked into Spokane County Jail. They're also more often the subjects of use of force by the Spokane Police Department. How should the Spokane Police address racial disparities in the criminal justice system?
Yeah, such a tough issue. And there are some disparities. Obviously, the stats bear that out. You know, how we go about that, I mean, obviously, training is a big piece of that. But really, there really just is no one silver bullet to address this. And I think part of it is, as a city, we need to make sure that we are as welcoming as possible and that we're accepting of people of all different stripes and backgrounds. There is some judicial, criminal justice reform that needs to take place, bail reform, things like that, that I think will be very beneficial to a lot of the more vulnerable populations in our community. But there really just is not a silver bullet to just ending some of the discrimination and racism that does exist out in the community. That's just, you know, policies aren't going to change those things. It's a hearts-and-mind type of issue that, you know, I think the more folks like us can talk about it, the better it'll be, but we're just not going to fix it with new policies, I don't believe.
Tim?
Yeah, I know that we live in the most diverse district in the city, and I've seen that with our childcare business. We've seen the struggles that families are going through. I think minimizing the struggles is part of the thing the city can do, reducing burdens, increasing quality in the community. I think that you look at the roads in the districts where many of the minorities and my family live, they're not as good. And so there's just a lot of things that we can increase the quality of life, and that's going to help them out on a better path. I think supporting their families, their children, in different ways is going to help to some extent, but there is no silver bullet.
All right, Tim?
If I could ask a follow-up question there?
Yeah, absolutely.
You mentioned bail reform. What sort of reforms would you each support to our criminal justice system?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, again, bail reform, I think, is an important one. Like the Bail Project, I think some of the work they do is really good. You know, we just need to make sure that we're not creating a situation where somebody is essentially not able to bond out, and they're not someone who's going to recommit, they're not someone who's a violent offender, to make sure that we're keeping room, especially in the jails, because the jails are so overpopulated, and they are not the safest place. And so, especially for early offenders, people that it's their first, second time, they really need that assistance. We need to move them into diversion. I think the community court is really helpful and beneficial. But yeah, we need to look at those sorts of things, because I think the best training ground for a better criminal is a jail cell. So anything we can do to keep folks out of a jail cell that don't really, truly belong there, I think makes a lot of sense for the community. But the folks that belong there should be there, and it should not be in a situation where they're going in in the morning, coming out, and going back in that evening. That's just ridiculous.
And Tim, do you have a response?
Yeah, I think we can research the issue. Obviously, we have an old jail. It was built 40 years ago. When we're looking at the bail system, obviously, we don't want people bailing out that are dangerous. I don't think we can control what the judges do necessarily, but when we look at how much the bail costs and whether people can get out, there are some bail reforms that we could do to get them back out, maybe to work. One of the things that we see with generational poverty is someone makes a decision, it's a bad decision, they lose their job. So let's get them back out so they can keep their job. I think that's important. But as far as the bail reform, I don't know all the specifics on how we can do that, but it's something worth looking into.
All right, Mr. Benn, you'll have this next question. We can stick with Adam for this one.
Sure. The Central City Line that the Spokane Transit Authority is planning for would connect your district to downtown and the rest of the city. Do you support the Central City Line as it's currently constructed and designed?
What I saw with the Central City Line was a good bus line for the university district and the college and that connection. Unfortunately, there's part of the district that I would be representing and serving that doesn't even have adequate bus service or any bus service at all. What I saw with the City Line was they came to the voters with a tax measure. The voters turned it down because they thought it was excessive, and so then they turned around and came up with a new proposal. The new proposal was about $20 million less. The voters said, "Yep, you sharpened your pencils. Let's get this done." So now we saw the STA Board voted to spend $20 million more dollars. And if folks remember about a decade ago when this happened, what ended up happening was when the downturn in the economy hit and tax rates stayed the same, but revenues went down, we lost bus service, they had to cut back. So I am concerned about that.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yeah, I was fairly outspoken against it at first. I thought the route didn't make sense, and I still really question whether or not we're going to have the ridership to actually support the operational costs of the Central City Line. But obviously, that point's mooted now because it's moving ahead. One of my big frustrations, right in the middle of Chief Gary, there's a woman, Mari Cruz, who I've been trying to help, who's the only single-family home that's going to basically be completely disrupted by the Central City Line. It's been poor communication. They haven't listened to her pleas. There are much more suitable alternative sites, only a block or two away from her home, where they could put these platforms and not disrupt people's living situations. So I think we need to be considering the real impacts of some of this stuff and be really smart about how we address it. And obviously, tough decisions have to be made by government at times, but when there are alternatives that will help people, we should look at those. So I've been really frustrated with the implementation side of this, and I guess we're going to see how the outcome is, but it's been really frustrating.
All right, Samantha, next question, and Michael, you'll take this one first.
So, Mr. Cathcart, you've helped sponsor a couple of propositions on the ballot this year. One of those would bring bargaining negotiations for contracts into the open eye. Is that the way to go, and how do you think that'll impact the city's bottom line?
Absolutely. We've had three years without a contract with our police guild, so opening this up to public scrutiny is anything but the right direction to take our city. We need transparency. Transparency is something I am extremely passionate about, something that my organization is passionate about. I think we can do so much better across the board on transparency, from making sure the public understands how their council members are voting, to ensuring that when ordinances are amended, the public has an opportunity to read those ordinances, to, yeah, opening up the bargaining negotiations so the public can see exactly what is being offered, what's being rejected. Otherwise, there's no way to hold your elected officials accountable for the decisions they make, and there's no way for our hard-working public servants that work in City Hall and around the city to know if their negotiators are working adequately on their behalf. This is a win-win across the board for everybody. It's extremely popular, and I'm really excited that we got it on the ballot this year.
Mr. Benn?
Yeah, I don't know how popular it is. I've heard mixed feelings about it, because we have had a three-year lapse in the contract with our law enforcement, and we've seen strikes in different areas of the state. I haven't seen this implemented. I don't see how it's going to work, so I don't know all the details, but I know that we need to listen to negotiators, the people that actually negotiate these contracts. I'd like to hear them answer this question to see if it would be helpful for them. I'd like to hear the members and their opinion on it, and I'd like to hear, you know, maybe from the administration and their staff and what they would think about opening up negotiations to the public, because that would probably change the dynamic. But I think at the end of the day, the city council takes a vote to either approve or deny contracts, and that's where the elected representatives are held accountable, is what they essentially approve.
Yeah.
So obviously, this has been implemented in a few other counties, including Spokane County. A great example of a place where it's worked well is the Pullman School District. They did this a couple of years ago, and since they implemented it, they've successfully negotiated contracts with their union down there. So it's a really good policy. Transparency should never be illegal. Transparency is something that we should demand from our government officials, and so I think this is a great thing, and I really have not heard the criticisms that Mr. Benn talks about.
And the criticisms I've heard actually just came from citizens out knocking on the doors that are concerned about it with their family's jobs and their employment. So we'll see if the voters approve it. If they approve it, then I'll be all for it, obviously, and we'll move forward. Government should be transparent and open to the public, and one of the things I know that City Hall needs to do better is get those public records requests out sooner than later.
All right, moving on to the next question. Adam, you'll take this, and Mr. Benn, you'll answer this one first.
So the economic struggles of residents in your district are well chronicled. What, as a council member, will you do to promote economic growth in northeast Spokane?
I think what we have is the yard, which used to be considered Dog Town. I think that we can improve the infrastructure there. I think the city has kind of dropped the ball on attracting businesses to that area, because we just don't have the infrastructure for those family wage jobs, for the manufacturing, for the industrial kind of work that we need. Years ago, in the city of Spokane, we had Mead Kaiser Plant, and that plant provided family wage jobs. When we lost that plant, it really hit northeast Spokane hard. Those properties are still there. We need to find ways to attract companies that will utilize that land, put those folks back to work in family wage jobs.
Yeah, there's a few things we need to do. We need to make it a lot easier to build and implement neighborhood retail, neighborhood eateries. I think that's critical, especially in some of the more struggling neighborhoods, to make that more viable, to kind of help raise up those areas. But also, yeah, the yard is very important. In fact, one of the first things I would do as a member of the council, if it hasn't been done yet, is to go to the county and help secure that partnership that we need with the county, to make sure that we can expand the territory, expand the resources, make sure that we can better invest through the PDA that's there, the 75% of taxes back into the yard to help build up those roads, sidewalks, infrastructure, so that we can pull in more manufacturers that can bring in more good-paying, skilled and unskilled jobs to the area there. That is going to be just so critical. Lastly, I really believe that we need to make Hilliard more of a destination, and I think if we can really work with the employers on market and Wellesley and Crestline, I think we can do a much better job of trying to pull in some real attractive restaurants and things like that, that people all across the city are going to want to visit Hilliard and actually dine at.
All right, Samantha, you have the next question, and Mr. Cathcart, you'll take this one first.
Okay. The city has invested millions of dollars in water treatment to prevent pollutants from getting into the Spokane River, as I'm sure you're well aware. The city is also one of the major polluters into the river and is one of five people who've asked for permission to not meet state toxics limits specifically for PCBs. Do you think that's the right move for the city to be taking right now?
So I think the city's done a really good job with trying to be as clean as they can. They've moved in that direction. Obviously, there are costs associated with a lot of this, and those costs are going to be borne by taxpayers, so we need to make sure that we're getting there as cost-effectively as possible. I know some of those PCB standards are pretty high, and so trying to meet those is just extremely beyond what our budget can handle right now. But we're doing a great job with building the CSO tanks and implementing those. Once those are all online, I think we're going to see a lot less pollutants that flow into the river, especially after storms. And so I think the city's done a really good job with trying to move in the, kind of to be a friend to the environment in the city of Spokane.
Mr. Benn?
Yeah, I absolutely think the river's crucial to, you know, to keep it clean. It's where we live. It's part of the reason why our city exists, the Spokane River. That's why we're located here. I think that when you talk about PCBs, we have to look at the city's history. So when we go back a few years, they were using paint that had PCBs in it to stripe our streets and for the bike lanes, and so they had to move to a lighter PCB painter, a PCB-free paint. And then what they found was they still found PCBs in the water, and the reason why it was in the de-icer. So the de-icer we're using in the winter, we were using it excessively. They switched the de-icer chemical that we're using, and I think we could use less de-icer and maybe teach people a little bit more defensive driving in the snow and ice. And I know that Kristi Gornson's probably going to be helping with the weather reports over the winter, and hopefully, we can get people warned about icy conditions, not overuse of the de-icer, and keep the river clean.
All right, next question. Adam, you will take this one, and Mr. Benn, you'll have this one first.
So Spokane is continuing to grow, and with that growth comes new challenges. How can the city mitigate the impacts of new development on residents who already live here? And where do you think that growth and development should be focused?
Well, we're definitely going to see some upgrowth, where we see properties that are revitalized and are multifamily complexes. We're also seeing growth north of Crestline, and we're going to see a large development there. And what we saw two years ago was a road diet on Crestline, so it was a two-lane road that now is more congested, and with that addition of more housing for, you know, hundreds of units and families is more congestion. So we've got to control the congestion so that the people that are already living closer to the core of the city, whether it's Wellesley or Empire, they can still get out onto the road and get where they need to go without excessive congestion. We have to look at the zoning. We have to change the zoning as needed so that more housing can be built for people to live closer to the things that they want, whether it's grocery stores, restaurants, and to get to work.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yeah, regionally, I think over the next couple of years, we need 7,000 to 10,000 new units. Otherwise, we're going to see this housing crisis just continue the way it is. So we've got to get a lot smarter, and we need to make sure that we're enabling the builders to build more density around our centers, our corridors, downtown especially. We need a lot more residences in those areas because it supports the employers there. We already have infrastructure built out there, so it actually saves the city more money on providing services to the community when we can get more people living in those commercial areas. And so it's going to just create a much more vibrant and safe atmosphere as well, because when there's a lot of people around, it's harder to hide in the shadows and commit crime. So it's actually a real positive thing. But along with this, we're going to have to revisit some of the development standards. We're going to have to look, I want to champion a small lot ordinance to make sure that we can create smaller housing options for millennials trying to get into the market or seniors who are downsizing. We just need a lot more options, and we can get the affordability under control if we allow some of that growth, especially around those centers and corridors to occur. Really important.
This next question will be from Samantha, and Mr. Cathcart, you'll take this one first.
One of the major talking points from the Condon administration around homelessness has been that surrounding municipalities, counties should be chipping in and paying their fair share. Do you agree with that? And how would you, as a city council member, make that happen?
Yeah, we have to facilitate those partnerships, and I've got a lot of friends that I know in the county. A lot of them are supporting me in this campaign, and I think we can reach out and actually get a partnership to work regionally. That was one of the big frustrations with the proposed shelter that the city was never able to secure this year, was I think they were looking in the wrong places for where they would locate it. They didn't have a lot of good information to share with those partners, and so they were reluctant to buy in. And so I think we've got to be really smart about where we place these shelters, the size and scope. I'm a believer that we need smaller-form shelters that are spread out across the region, and in order to accommodate that, we're going to have to have better partnerships with the Valley, Liberty Lake, Unincorporated County, Airway Heights, and we have to bring all them on board. And so it's just going to be about working with them, talking with them, and securing those partnerships to make it happen.
Mr. Benn?
Yeah, I think that we've really dropped the ball with the homeless shelter issue as a whole. The city of Spokane has kind of bare the brunt of the issue because of the way the federal dollars were brought in and the way the county and the valley all put their money into one box here in the city of Spokane. And I think that it needs to be a regional approach. I do agree that we need to spread this issue out, but we need to have all the municipal governments involved. This is not just a Spokane problem. This is a regional problem. We're the largest city, I believe, between Seattle and Minneapolis, and so we need support from the federal, the state, the county level, and we should zone these locations. You know, we see the zoning for all sorts of different kinds of industries, and we should zone ourselves as a government where we put these. We shouldn't just do emergency management and use an old shopping mall or an old furniture store just because we put ourselves into emergency management, and then we negatively impact neighborhoods, and it's not good for the people that the people are serving. The homeless are also negatively affected because the populations are mixed and people are victimized.
All right. Sure.
So homeless shelters shouldn't go in commercial areas or in neighborhoods. Where would a homeless zone go?
I think that we've seen good, probably good, policy around the private ones that have been located at the edge of the city, right there by the river. There's a nice pristine place, the Union Gospel Mission. They haven't had the crime problems. If you look at the police calls to the homeless shelters that the city's put in commercial areas, it's been excessive. It's not good for the folks they're serving. It's not good for law enforcement and the neighborhoods around. So I think that if we have to just look at the city, where do we have that are good locations where these people can be safe, monitored? And we can't have it all in one place. That's the other problem that we had, is that they're too concentrated, and so we have folks that are mentally ill, being victimized by people that are criminal elements in that population and drug dealers. So I think we've got to separate the populations and help these folks, not just find a warm place for them to sleep temporarily.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yeah, so I think part of the solution is smaller-form shelters that are spread out across the region. I think that's going to eliminate the need to place, you know, 120-bed shelter, you know, misguidedly, right in the middle of East Central or right in the middle of Hilliard, which were both terrible ideas to even consider. And so I think if we have smaller forms, spread out, security's a lot easier, less impact on the neighbors. UGM is a great example. You know, they made the specific choice to locate where they did on Trent because they specifically wanted to be out of that downtown core. They wanted to be good neighbors, and they wanted to make sure that they could provide those services without creating a lot of impacts on the surrounding community. So I think it's just about being really smart about how we locate and where we locate these things. And yeah, I mean, services is a big part of this, and so if we're going to have a shelter system that's supported through taxpayer funds, we need to make sure accountability is part of that, and that we're actually getting people back on their feet, and that we're not sort of helping them to stay where they are. I don't think that benefits them. It's not compassionate. It doesn't help the community at all.
Okay, we're running out of time, so this next question, we're going to limit down to 30 seconds. And Mr. Benn, you'll take this one first, and Adam, go ahead.
I'm wondering if there's a specific policy or proposal under the Mayor Condon administration that either of you disagree with.
You know, I'm not quite sure. I've followed the city really closely. There's been a lot of things that have gone on, some of them positive, some of them not so positive. I'd rather not look back. I'd rather look forward. Mayor Condon has done his job for eight years. People can love him or not. That's up to them, but I think we just need to move forward. That's where we need to look, is forward. What policies are going to bring us into a better light, bring us into a more prosperous city where there's more, I think, opportunity for our children growing up and the college students graduating? So I prefer to look forward.
All right, Mr. Cathcart?
Not a policy so much. I just think that the Condon administration hasn't looked closely enough at housing and development, and I think that we could have done a better job over the last few years of allowing more of that to occur in the right areas around town. So it's not really a policy. It's just something that wasn't necessarily their top priority, and so I would have probably looked at that a little differently. But yeah, going forward, I think we can do some things differently, some things that the city really needs, and, you know, I think the mayor's done a really good job on the operation side, and so look forward to working with the new mayor.
Your predecessor, Mike Fagan, was often the one vote in six one votes on council. If elected, how would you get to either more of an even split, where you have more council members agreeing with you, or more votes that are seven-zero?
Well, I think a lot of it is just the ability to build relationships and work across the aisle, work with everybody that you have to to actually get the stuff done for the district. I think Councilman Fagan has been a great councilman when it comes to constituent relations, and I probably agree with him on a good number of policies. There are some that I definitely disagree with, like regulating Uber and Lyft. I didn't think that was necessarily the right direction to go. In fact, I probably would have gone the opposite way. I think we need to create more transportation options. It's better for the community, better for the environment, better, just better for everybody to have those options available. So I would have taken that in a different direction. But I think it's, yeah, it comes back to those relationships, just knowing how to communicate with people, how to articulate an argument, and how to fight for what you need in your district. And I think that's what I can bring to the table as a candidate and as a council member.
Mr. Benn?
I think there was some issues that were brought up. The vast majority of what the council votes on is pretty unanimous. They agree to it. They hammer out the details of the policy prior to the Monday night city council meeting, so most of them are unanimous. Sometimes he was the dissenting vote, but I think that was because of agenda-driven issues being brought to the council and building relationships and focusing on policies to move Spokane forward, to solve problems in northeast Spokane, is where I'm going to be working. And so I think there'll be a little less division. We're going to see a different climate on the city council due to people that are termed out. We're going to have a new council president, and also Mike Fagan will be, he's termed out. We're going to have a new mayor, and I think moving forward, we're just going to need to work on solutions that we can all agree on, and so there'll be, I think, less dissent in the coming years because of those issues that we have to tackle.
Can I ask a follow-up? Mr. Benn, you mentioned agenda-driven issues. Can you set an example of such an issue and why you think it was inappropriate for the city council to take that up?
Well, you know, there was some, I think, one of the dissenting votes he made was on, I think, elephant hooks, which was an issue a couple of years back, brought up, I believe, by a South Hill council member. Don't have a whole lot of elephants in Spokane. It was an issue that maybe made the circus not come to Spokane, but they already hadn't been in Spokane in years. So some of those things that really don't make a difference for most of the residents in the city of Spokane, I think we could put those off to the side and focus more on real solutions that help people in northeast Spokane and across the city.
Do you have a response, Mr. Cathcart?[1663.21] Do you have a response, Mr. Cathcart?
Yeah, I'm a big believer in priorities of government. I think we've got to focus in on those things that are really critical to keeping our community strong and safe. Public safety, addressing the issues around homelessness, streets, infrastructure, economy, transparency. But what we don't need are resolutions that are purely divisive. They really don't actually do anything, affect anything, except create just a lot of anger and frustration amongst people of different political backgrounds. And so I'm not one that's going to propose those. I will most often oppose them if they are brought up because I just don't think it's the right use of taxpayer time and money as a city council.
All right. Adam, do you have another question?
Sure. Mr. Ben, you mentioned the need to solve drug addiction. What can the city's role be in reducing drug addiction in Spokane, be it through enforcement or providing services?
Well, I think we have a lot of services. We have drug rehab facilities, but we're not looking at the long-term solution. And people are going through drug rehab over and over again, upwards of a dozen times, which is very costly, and I'm sure it's traumatic for those drug users. I've personally known people from high school that are now no longer with us because of a drug addiction and an overdose. It's very sad. It damages a family, and those drugs are so toxic, and they grab a hold of your life and they just crush it. And so there are, I know a gal out there with a couple of children that no longer have a father because of an overdose. They're very toxic drugs. They shouldn't be out on the open market. There's a reason why we go to the doctor, and they're very careful about the prescriptions they provide us. We can't just go to the pharmacy and write our own prescription. So I believe that we need to get with our federal and state partners and stop the flow of drugs into Spokane. These are not drugs that are created in Spokane. They're not concocted here. They're shipped here, and the drug cartels have decided that our city's a target, which is why we have this big problem. So we need to solve it at the root cause, which is the trafficking.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yeah, I think there's a few different things we should look at. First and foremost, if we do decide to put something on the ballot for a new jail and the community decides that's the direction they want to go, I've said all along that part of that, we need to put dollars towards mental health and drug addiction treatment. Right now, the Spokane Jail is one of the largest mental health institutions in the state of Washington, and we end up with a lot of people who are put into that facility. And so we need to make sure that there is treatment options available for them as a diversion or in addition to perhaps their stay in jail. I think that's a great way to address it. We also need to lobby the state for a lot more money to help with mental health and drug treatment. That is a role that the state plays, and they haven't allocated as much money as they should be. And so I've said all along that, you know, I'll lean on my relationships in Olympia, and I will work with the city and other partners to make sure that we can go back there and advocate strong for the funding that we need, to make sure that we're addressing these things. And then also, I really want to create a situation or a scenario that's a little bit similar to New York City. I'm running out of time, but basically, more competition among service providers. I think we can get greater outcomes, better outcomes for everybody.
Yeah, I wanted to respond to that.
All right, sure.
Or add to it. Yeah, our state mental health system is broken. We have a lot of folks in the city of Spokane that they're not criminals, they're mentally ill. They need the care. That's actually costing us more with them being homeless on the streets or in a jail. They need the care to help them with their mental illness. And some of them are using these illicit drugs to self-medicate. But we also have to face the fact that we have drug-induced mental illness. And so we've got to go after the root cause, which is the drugs coming into the city. And we have to sort it out, and we have to do it soon because our mental health system isn't going to be able to handle all the drug-induced mental illness that we're seeing rise.
And Mr. Cathcart, do you have a response?
Yeah, so again, the New York City model, I think, is a good one. They've done a really good job of inserting accountability as you participate in their programs, like the shelter system. They're helping to get you into drug treatment, mental health treatment, that sort of thing. I think that's something we should be adopting here. In addition, they have a great system of competition among service providers. They judge and grade performances, and that can mean perhaps bonuses for those organizations or different sorts of funding, or maybe moving funding to another organization that can get it done better. And I think if we can get more people into that service arena, competing for those dollars, we're going to have much better outcomes.
All right, Samantha, another question?
Yeah. According to census data, about 75% of Spokane workers drive alone on their way to work, and their average commute's about 20 minutes one direction. Greenhouse gas emissions, that's also our largest source, comes from transportation. What should the city be doing to reduce those single-driver, one-way trips that are long?
Is this me?
Yeah. Mr. Cathcart, you can go first.
Well, I mean, I'm one of those. I commute mostly by car and mostly by myself. You know, I think short of a massive increase in buses and availability of alternative transportation, you know, it's going to be a lot, very difficult to get people to leave their automobile and move to that direction because, you know, people want to operate on their schedules. They don't want to have to wait 20 minutes for a bus to arrive. They want to be able to go and commute and do those things on their own when they want to. And so I don't think there's going to be a perfect solution to that, but we've got to make sure that we're providing those options. Again, I wouldn't be regulating Uber and Lyft and taxing them the way we are, perhaps hurting those drivers. I think we can be a lot smarter with that. But we also need to be smarter with the bus system. There are residents in apartments like the LS Taro over on, off of Upriver, they have to walk almost a mile just to get to a bus stop. And these are low-income residents that really need that bus service. And so we should do a better job of making sure that it's available for people like that. And we just need to make sure that we have more neighborhood retail, more neighborhood options, eateries, so people can walk and go to those destinations easier.
Mr. Ben?
I think there's a lot of things that we can do. I have a perfect example in my wife and I's business. And it's a home-based business. We have two lots, and on one side is a preschool. Currently, the preschool isn't in operation, but we do before and after-school as a home-based business. So we don't have a commute. But regulations have shut down most of the industry. So now people are driving all across town to a commercial building to drop off their child so they can go to work. I think if we can reduce regulations on home-based businesses and help people start small businesses, like those eateries and restaurants in different locations around